Recording. Need to call the special meeting to order to go over the bills or pay the bills.
How come there's no receipt or any paperwork with this USDA World Development? It's just for-
What's the amount?
Fourteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-four and thirty cents.
That is a semi-annual payment that comes out.
They don't-
So they don't send you pay-.
They don't send an invoice, they just send that? You don't, when they, they just, it's an automatic deduct?
That's correct, and it's been that way since I've started.
So you don't, but you can't print anything off of when they send you an email or anything? You can't print like the main statement?
They don't even send an email, I could print the account activity.
Snip tack it, you know what I mean?
Yeah, that's fine.
Snip tack it and put it so that you have a paper, have a paper trail?
Huh?
Um. Okay.
Paul in five eight seven, those taxes on the fees?
How come these already have, whose are these, whose signature is that? Is that his? So you have.
Are you coming tomorrow?
I'm actually on vacation.
Oh, we're really, we're, are you first? You guys your group?
Right, I got that there.
The, um, who's coming home?
I was gonna say, I thought that I'd already brought the easement agreement, I need to go home.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the people who were coming tomorrow, but they were the ones that need to be moved by Tuesday.
Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Where you guys at, I don't drill.
Um, they're gonna be on this side here. Maybe just start on this side here. This side of the issue.
Here's that.
Yeah, that was the first time. That was, we, when they noticed was pretty hard. Was that kid, like fifty thousand dollars, that's where it was like.
What is it?
The land, the land.
Yeah, we have a contract with Commonwealth that we have to pay out of pocket for all the line service project invoices. If we didn't go with their plan.
Their, their plan, their service?
Yes.
I was gonna say now, isn't she proposing that the next work is already covered?
The P false, they have to.
Okay, that's right.
They're gonna do the P false right directly to the state.
Or just use our agency, that's right.
Then you got a big cabin, like we have a big pandemic area, like ninety-eight thousand.
Yes.
A million maintenance, because we'll get that for probably the next, I think, end up to six hundred and eighty thousand. But we'll go up to that system, and it's gonna be about two million dollars.
For water?
Yeah.
Some need water?
And everybody's gonna have to put a van, now they're trying to figure out how to destroy. It's crazy. Yeah, before.
Now, how does this work? iCloud turned around and, and invoiced us because of insufficient funds. Now, did we put this amount on, back on their account?
Yes, we do.
And then, I was gonna say, how does, I can't remember how that reads. I don't think we can, I don't think it's in, or have they made it an ordinance that we can charge an extra? Or is it just what the insufficient funds?
So, invoice cloud, I'm not sure how that works. They might charge the customer separately for a return check.
But as for us, for the town.
Um, as far as like First Financial, if they have like an eight dollar, I think First has like an eight dollar return check fee, that goes on the customer's account as well.
Well, right, right. I was thinking, I know we can't, we don't think we drop it off, but we just do.
Yes.
You know, you know that?
Yeah. I, I, I could probably have, because I have, uh. My daughter got many emails, last month, maybe over contracts.
It's like, oh geez, I know. Ah, yeah. What is this, Sycamore Engineering to remove old vendors and install new vendors? Huh?
Sycamore is something that we pay out a lot for, um, they do store model repair, they do water salesman repair. Um, so we have quite a few open EOs and invoices with them.
Well, no, because that's what we were talking about this morning. We did the one up on Paris Avenue. We haven't done anything with that one. Ed, Ed and his crew did that one. But I was talking to Chuck, and Chuck had said he, I think that one was replaced. And the old one is down on the ground, and he told them to get that one repaired so that they could swap them out, but they didn't. So Cole called me, uh, it was probably about three thirty, and I was finishing up working on my report, so I didn't get a chance to talk to him. But I told him I'd call him back this evening to find out. But I know they had said something about the rail. They were gonna have to pump it out to, to maybe repair the rail. But I thought, I know when, when that one on Paris Avenue went down, we rented. Didn't we rent an external one and have it keep up until that one got repaired instead of purchasing another one? And I don't know if that one's, if that's the same size as that one on Paris Avenue. I, I don't know either. Right, I, I know it's not a neat one. It's been in there too, I mean, it's a, it's the- Yeah, it's a bigger one, it's not a residential one. We're talking about the one by Chuck's and that, yeah. Yeah, and like I said, I, she, she, I talked to her about seven o'clock this morning, and she had said, I said, well, get ahold of Ed and see if his crew can't come out and kind of evaluate and see what's going on. It might just need to be put back on the rail and, but then I thought, I'm gonna have to pump it. Because I know she said the last time they pumped, they had, they took seven loads out of it, that happened on that Saturday morning.
If they just grab us ten thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Ten dollars a day.
But that whole, that whole neighborhood, you know what I mean? What is there, there's three of those lift stations, and that's, that's a must. So like I said, I don't know, I wanted to go through. Do you remem, I, who, who didn't we have fix it? I wanted to pull the old, um. Did the one up?
Oh.
Up on Paris Avenue? I'll, I'll, let me get with Chuck and see, and then I'll, we, I'll look at the history. Okay. Well, yeah, because I knew it was Colin kind of finished up that project, but, so like I said, I wanted to get with Chuck to see.
Kevin, we should be, we should have seen where I'm going to get that goal. The grant, the grant, where they go, we'll redo the, uh, last four.
Yeah, you signed that document?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the one, yeah, we've got the link to take. They're gonna, they're gonna contact before work, or they're gonna go bad?
Um, they should.
They might just go right out.
Yeah, because it's already more than they're having.
Right, that's right.
How many phones have we got back there locked up in the venue?
None.
None?
None. You guys already approved beat over all the phones? And that phone system will, will go along with the whole joint thing, inspecting, no, no one? Oh, the, oh, yeah.
What, are we paying?
What are we paying First Financial a service charge for?
That's something that we do monthly, that's just a monthly charge that they implement.
I know, we need to go back, because I know we've never paid before. You know, if you maintain a certain amount, which we always maintained a certain amount, uh, and never paid no service charges of the bank. Do we happen to know if that's still part of our, uh, situation and what that amount is?
I would have to get with First and see what type of accounts that we have. Unfortunately, though, when I first is, pretty much, I think every account unfortunately has a service fee these days.
Guess that went out when Tracy went out, huh? What is this, um, Warpwell Technologies?
That's the time clock system. Um, but speaking of time clock, we still do not have all the employees using the time clock. And that makes a mess for payroll, because they usually don't have all their time cards in by the end of the pay period. So I know it comes to, up to if we miss hours, I need to track that to them. Yeah. Yeah, I know I mentioned before, there is an app that they can have on the phone. And that is complimentary with our subscription to U-attend, and they just have to be within a mile radius of the company. So like the pseudo-plan.
You, you know how it's set up?
Yes, they gave me instructions, um, about a year ago, and I wrote up a little summary, and I gave it to Chuck, and I just think it got lost.
So, let's see, steps one, it's usually up, just make tinkers and see if you can get us that one.
Yeah, because it's just like an app that they would have to download, and, um, you just have to go to their settings in U-attend, and make it to where they can, um, access it with their mobile phone.
So we had a past due balance on Keystone? How come, um, we have a past due amount on?
They just sent us those past due invoices.
They just sent, they don't send you a invoices on time?
We have been paying rent ones, yes, but I was unaware of the past due, and they had just sent that.
State Board of Account frowns on that stuff. Is she? Okay. Because they probably have done, they've probably completed two thousand and three. Because when I talked to Susan, Susan and I kind of touched base on that too. Well, yeah, I set it up next Tuesday. That's what I was gonna ask you, I can, it doesn't matter to me. Okay. If you wanna do that, then I can just go ahead and just leave it a couple minutes early from work, and then I can be here. But I was thinking though, yeah, he's told me he didn't want to. But I was thinking, do you want to, um, take him down to wastewater or that water plant or something, so we're not here in, in public? Just kind of wait and see.
Did you get up?
Yeah, he's grabbing.
Nobody has the one.
Just so you know, so when you send yours or something, it may be two weeks before we get up.
He was my attorney for something.
That's just so you already know.
Well, they got him doing, so they lost two, that's a prostitute, so there's a lot of the prosecutor.
He told me that, he was doing that case already.
What is this float switch?
Um, sending something for waste water.
The float with, uh.
How, oh, okay.
And this is the, you have to have a note of acceptance.
Huh?
And then, if you need one, and you can, it's gonna turn right back to you. Or we decide both, we want to see it, how? But either way, we'll have to sign it until I can get it, it's you. And we won't, yeah, we'll file it through recorder.
So, Jordi, I need a motion to accept the easement agreement.
I make a motion that we accept the, um, easement agreement with joint to be located, um, the easement to locate, uh, what's it called?
Concrete pad.
Uh, just a concrete pad to, to place what, what's the equipment that's gonna be on it?
To the telecom remote cabinet.
A tal, a telecom remote cabinet, um, down on Radcliffe, located in between our wastewater and water, um, offices.
So I get all those in paper?
All right.
Yep.
She's done fired that for four months, I have a chance. Kevin, you gotta copy these, right?
Nope. These are all, these are, oh, okay. Do, do you need us to know, right?
Yeah, by this one, yeah.
Can you know Rice something, Caitlin?
What?
Will you know Rice something for us?
Yeah, let me go over mine, Sam.
You got a key, do you have a key?
Yep, I got it.
You're gonna file easement, right?
Yeah, I'll file one, we'll record it.
There you go, bud, fired up.
Oh, like, Alyssa's good, but he'll be not here?
Nice, Jordi, it's very good, she'll like copy Alyssa.
Oh, be cool, well done.
All right.
Have a good vacation, you going anywhere?
No, um, just, well, leave a time off.
Really call, really call, be on health break.
Stay came in?
Like, he's probably got mental health protection. What did you know, Ricey? Um, he's got.
He heard, I got it.
I'll walk down and help that. You did not good.
You need signature.
So I'm never raising the change, is that what's? Yep, I'm done. Okay, so today is the seventeenth.
Yeah, you sweep that. Yeah, you go, you go into our. Most of the other ones will have them. They're gonna, wants to pay for something. We filtered out.
How's come there, we have a, a pump number two repair, and the date is one twenty-three, twenty-five, and it has Kevin and Colin on there? How come we're just now paying bills from January?
Because we just received the invoice.
Okay.
It took them that long to rebuild those pumps?
Yeah.
Like, what did you charge them?
Eleven thousand, wow, that's plus freight, and that's total. Yeah, it's fifty, fifty-three, eleven. So, yeah, that's, is that what we're looking at, at that?
He's in bashful rebuild here.
Yeah. Because that's what I'm thinking.
I think I could call this, I retired from my job, but college and masters, and I apologize to you.
Yeah, that's, you gotta do something, you gotta do something, I'll give you back one.
I know, the Iliana, the Iliana, um, three hundred and eighty, that was just two. Pumped at that.
Yeah, you went, same thing, same thing with my sisters. First one, she had a degree, and they all went, two of them went back and did it, so I had to bring the ice.
Yeah.
I know, I'm sorry, I just.
You're welcome.
Thank you, y'all have a great weekend.
Thanks, Dan.
Okay.
Hey, they get back to the side of the river.
Yeah.
Well, see, because then the other sister was married to Sam.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you would need, yeah, we, we can, we can do that. So, if we have, so we have, well, these are ready, but now, but not for July. So you can come in a couple times and just get ahead of the whole stack if you wanted to.
I get it. I can get right now, but it rains right until, uh, four AM, it's.
Yeah, well, so this is an option. We, we do this, uh, this is all re-curred, so you will see these pile up. Anytime you come in, there'll be some, if you want to stay there to cur. Can we get a Courtney down with better later?
What's this Colonial Life?
That is a monthly payment that comes out of the employee's check, so we're basically just paying them what we receive from the employees.
So what, what does it cover Colonial Life, what is it, life insurance?
It depends, I think it's like a cancer policy, you can get an accidental policy, basically, it's kind of like an Aflac. Similar to Aflac, I guess. Only a handful of employees have it.
So when, when this comes out, then, um, what I would like to see is your printout, your, um, your deductions. So that we can-
Like a payroll deduction, or like an invoice from where?
From, an, an invoice from the company, and then also run your report from, on what's deducted from what employee, so that we know that it is, is being reimbursed.
Uh, this, this name, Chuck's tenth year.
Is this him?
Yeah.
Okay, now this workforce, this Indiana Department workforce, that is the unemployment, right? And we, are we still a re, uh, re, uh, reimbursable? I mean, we only pay into it if somebody's strong, correct?
So I believe we have unemployment insurance that covers that. What this is, it's the Core League Employment Report. Basically, anything under, like, the cap of taxable wages, we have to pay the hanging on, I think so.
Okay.
So like here, taxable wages, so all these customers, employees that already reached the cap.
Their cap, okay.
So these are the employees and what they've made so far.
Okay.
So, I think the cap's like ninety-five hundred.
Okay.
And it usually goes down as the year, so like quarter one is basically expensive, of course. Quarter two, and then quarter three, quarter four, unless we were to get new employees.
It's a hard, hard terrible channel, I can send you to, Kobe sent you to, oh, you can just get off the website, and go right, it's right there.
Yeah, did Jared call you about the June hundred dollars west road issues?
No, we did something like that.
You did?
No.
Oh, yes, I did. It's a screenshot.
It's a public form, it's a public meeting.
It's also Facebook, it's the same by employees, you got things there.
It's, yeah.
Well, are we gonna talk about employees and posting stuff? No, that's just not even a parent gen.
But that's the million dollar lawsuit we got right now with Vicker, that's why we got one.
Yeah, there's, you know, there's, there should be some kind of internal control on-
How does Jim posting a video, a public YouTube video to Facebook?
I know, but it's, it's on west road issues.
It's town employees. It's not anybody else could do, anybody else could do it, but just town employees are not allowed to. I don't know, I don't know exactly the wording in, in the policy, but I do believe like only town council members are allowed to talk to the social media.
So is that in the handbook somewhere?
That I don't know, that's what we kind of discussed.
Because I saw it also in the handbook as far as employee behavior while at work, outside work, as long as they were promoting the company, I didn't think that was allowed. Because like when I work at Beazlers, like anything.
But this is, this is government, though, it's not, it's not a private.
And you're in the middle of a lawsuit, you're in the middle of a municipal lawsuit.
Yeah, it's not a-
I watched she did, posted west road issues, and it's.
It's not, and it's, we're not a private company.
She did it right back now. I think it's on here, Carter says, um, yeah. I just, a call I got from the attorney.
The attorney called you about it?
Yeah.
Wow.
It's just, it's because, he has to watch that because the, have you seen the picture lawsuit?
I don't follow that closely enough, but I've heard about it, but I thought that was an internal leak, I didn't think it got posted.
Well, it was all public knowledge, but are-
So if Jim or two had posted it to her personal Facebook?
Yeah, nothing, nothing like that.
But is West Terra Hope issues considered any, tied to the town?
It's, it's, no.
Like, if Jen were to have posted it on the actual West Terra Hope Facebook page, yeah, I could see the conflict, but for her to just post on a public forum?
No, we shouldn't, we haven't put it on our West Road page at home. No, I didn't presume it this time, so I wanted to get sure, we're, get on Duck's and Row, it's on our website and it can go to the YouTube link that way, so we're meeting the minimum standard by state? Okay, by putting it on Facebook, I thought that we'd have too, too many people carrying that, moving it all around. And I'll see you.
Okay, so I have another question, I'm just trying to better understand it. So say the town where it's hosting an event of some sort and say I were to put it on West Terra Hope issues, would that also be considered inappropriate?
You can, yeah, you can do a flyer on, on the website, I mean, if you get, if, if we agree, you know what I mean? Cause there's, it draws the line with employ, you know, you, 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 it draws the line with employees, you have to, if it's something, I, I, you know what, I don't know, like I said, I have to see the policy. I know, I know I've worked at places before where, uh, you know, there's, there's rules, it's a public thing.
Absolutely.
But, but I couldn't bring my family to, I, you know what I mean, as an employee, there's that fine line.
Yeah, I just. Yeah, I just, I feel like with West Terra Hope issues, it's in no way saying like West Terra Hope is responsible for this page. It was created by town people.
That's what Caleb, that's what Caleb and Stan got motion to, and that's.
That's what, who's they got motion to?
Caleb, but, but, well, Andrew's coming in, and it'd be a terrible, terrible issue.
Yeah, and Ryan Shafer's lawsuit to that issue.
Very good, I'm sorry, I wish I was one of those posted, and that's how it got, I'm gonna go with lawsuit.
But I feel like that's a police matter, so yes, that would absolutely have to be asked.
It's just a record, but we can't do it, Jared, ask Jared really try to do this.
So all of those, that case information was public?
Yeah.
When it was posted?
Not when it's under investigation, when it's under investigation, that's a different story.
It wasn't, it was during my case. Yeah, so it's definitely, that's in there both ways, that case is definitely under, under a school, that's in the court. Yeah, and Jared's like, just, he says, what are all the, where we posted?
Yeah.
It wasn't that big or nothing, I was saying. Our, our particular panel could not specifically have guidance in that frame, it could be a good idea to create those language. Yeah, and you have, you have other employees doing things on Facebook that also are forgiven by our Facebook, by our handbook rules. We just, we just got, uh, I need a motion to approve, we go water.
Wastewater in the town, I make a motion that we, uh.
You should be, uh, Cameron.
Pay, um, I make a motion that we pay the vouchers for wastewater town and water works. And stormwater.
Second, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye, I'll oppose.
Sign days, I don't know, I'm waiting.
Staying.
I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Make the motion, we adjourn the meeting.
We, we are.
Oh, you already did, you have the touches? Oh, we did?